All right. Well, we are going to reconvene this regular meeting of the Escondido Union School District Board of Trustees and we are going to open with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. We begin.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, all board members are present. We do have a report out of closed session.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the matter of anticipated litigation, Special Education Settlement Case Number 2025-26-02, the Board voted to approve the Special Education Settlement Agreement by a vote of five to zero. In closed session, the Board took action to approve the recommendation for the appointment of Sherri Moore as Director of Teaching and Learning effective September 2nd, 2025 by unanimous vote of five to zero. Congratulations.
Good evening, President Paulson, fellow board members, Dr. Barr and Cabinet. I am very excited by this new opportunity to continue doing the great work we're doing in EUSD, help bring the framework for the future to life, keep innovating for our students. So I am thrilled at this opportunity. I would like to thank all my mentors. I've had amazing mentors here in Escondido. I've had amazing staff that I've worked with at multiple school sites that have taught me something in my journey in this educational path. My family and my friends who support me every day, my husband who makes my coffee every day, that helps get things going. And I just appreciate the opportunity and look forward to all that we're going to accomplish for our students and our staff and our community. So, thank you very much.
In closed session, the Board took action to approve the recommendation for appointment of Morgan Conroy as Assistant Principal beginning August 11th, 2025 by unanimous vote of five to zero. Congratulations, Morgan.
Good evening, President Paulson, School Board, Dr. Barr and Cabinet. My name is Morgan Conroy, like you just shared, and I'm delighted to accept the role of Assistant Principal at RINCON. As a child of an EUSD Special Education teacher, a student of this district, and a career EUSD educator, I look forward to this new opportunity for professional growth. This new role also brings with it the chance to meet new wonderful students, staff, and members of the community of Escondido. I'm eager to challenge myself in this position and collaborate with my fellow leaders. Thank you.
Congratulations. That concludes the report.
All right. Thank you to everyone, including to Mr. Moore for being a good coffee maker. Moving on to approval of the agenda, looking for any corrections, items that need to be moved or removed?
I move approval. Second?
Ms. Harper moves. Ms. Gardner, seconds. Please vote. All right. Motion passes five to zero. And moving on, we've got a couple of meeting minutes to approve, so starting off with the minutes of July 17th, looking for a motion to approve.
I'll move approval. Second.
Mr. Olson, Mr. Olson moves. Mr. Houston, seconds. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Did it come up? Oh, there we go. All right. Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to the approval of the minutes of the July 24th Board Workshop. Mr. Houston moves. Ms. Gardner, seconds. And motion carries five to zero. All right. Do we have any public comments tonight? Seeing no public comments, we do not have, do we have a report from CSEA? We have no report from CSEA, no report from Triple E A?
Triple E A.
Oh, I apologize.
Can't see you by him in the podium.
I was confused by an earlier email. Go ahead. Thank you.
My name is Colleen Goldsmith and I am the new Secretary for Triple E A and on behalf of all the membership, we look forward to working with you this year.
Thank you very much. And very much welcome to you. And thank you to all of the teachers that are working hard to be ready for next week. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, do we have any items that anybody would like to have polled? And seeing that Ms. Harper doesn't have any items, I've got one that I would just like to ask a question about. Item three, the voluntary student insurance. Could we please just get an explanation of that? Thank you.
So, I'm sorry. So, per ed code, we are required to either offer or have insurance, voluntary insurance, at a minimum level for all of the students in our school. Over the, over many years, our, oh, over many years, our participation rate was zero. So, across all of the county, these insurance companies with this San Diego County Office said, were asking us to get the minimum amount of insurance. So, after many renditions of what exactly do we need, why do we need this, this will now allow us to cover all students and siblings if they're at a school event and volunteers for, if there's an accident at school, so, on the playground, and it gives them a minimum of $25,000, that's a $25,000 cap. If it's an emergency, for example, if they have to go to the hospital in an ambulance or emergency room, that's covered 100% up to $25,000. And it gives a first line of defense for our students or volunteers if something happens at a school event or field trip.
Okay, so this was traditionally in your enrollment packet, you would get the envelope with the insurance that the parents could write a check for and get additional insurance and nobody ever did it?
Correct.
Okay, and so now we are covering every student in the district at a cost of $20,187. So, a dollar and something per student?
Correct.
Okay. That sounds outstanding. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Looking for a motion?
I'll move approval. Second.
Ms. Harper moves. Ms. Gardner, seconds. And motion carries five to zero. We are going to have to slow down our voting or we're never going to get through this song or even through the introduction.
It's Hotel California.
That's Hotel California, but, that's right. That's like the, you gotta identify the song in two seconds. Okay. Presentations, we've got ICOC.
Good evening, honorable members of the Escondido Union School District Board, Dr. Barr and community members. My name is Joyce Masterson and I'm the Chair of the ICOC, which is the Independent Citizens Oversight Committee. On behalf of the committee, I'm pleased to present our 10th Annual Report to both the District Board and the community of Escondido. As a refresher for community members, voters approved Proposition E's 182.1 million bond measure in November 2014 to modernize school facilities, improve school security, and enhance the information technology infrastructure. At the Board of Education's direction, the ICOC reviews the expenditure of bond funds, ensures the funds are appropriately spent, and informs the public about the program's progress. The ICOC has seven members representing the community. A parent or guardian of a child enrolled in the district, a parent or guardian of a child enrolled in the district, and active in a parent-teacher organization. An active member in a business organization, an active member in a senior community organization, an active member in a bona fide taxpayers' association, and two members of the community at large. Over the past year, the Series D and E Funds have transformed our schools here in Escondido. We are proud to share that we are currently completing several projects this year. Mission Middle School's Modernization Phase III is nearly complete and ready for our students. It stands proudly on camp, on our campus, connecting, connected to the existing two-story buildings by the new two-story addition. This creates a connected campus for these buildings. Additionally, there is a brand-new turf field and a quarter-mile decomposed granite running track. At LR Green, Bernardo, and Reedy Creek, we added additional classrooms with remodeled modular classroom buildings to accommodate the upcoming growth from nearby housing developments in Escondido. Additionally, we are completing the repair of a failed infrastructure at Felicita School where past rainstorms damaged a wooden walkway canopy. The Mission Middle School Modernization Phase III has come to life in a big way. The project has significantly improved its campus and is currently in the final stages of construction. Soon our students will arrive into their new learning environment and the lease-back contractor, Lusardi Construction Company, and building supplier, American Modular Systems, are completing the utility infrastructure, exterior hardscape, landscape, and more importantly, the new buildings. The project consisted of constructing two all-electric modular buildings with 25 classrooms, office spaces, a workroom, and restrooms for staff and students. An open learning quad space and an outdoor seating area adjacent to the administration building will be available. We are also adding a quarter-mile decomposed granite running track and a rugby/soccer field, as well as expanding the parking lot. The parking lot will be covered with solar array panels and EV charging stations, demonstrating the district's commitment to sustainability. From this project, we met the Board of Education's Directive of disposing and recycling waste from 27 modular buildings. An annual review of expenditures and performance of the bond program was conducted by an independent audit firm, which found no discrepancies consistent with positive results from previous audits. The ICOC is pleased to report that the change order rate for the total prop P bond program currently stands at less than 3% over the past 11 years. We had two longstanding ICOC members retire this year, Ron Ryback and Neil Bokter. They both, we want to acknowledge their commitment and dedication for being with us for their full six-year terms. We are actively seeking replacements for these, their positions. The ICOC commends the district for its transparency, dedication, and meticulous work in meeting the bond's objectives, reporting, and presentations. We take pride in being part of a community that is deeply invested in the progress and growth of our schools. We eagerly anticipate the continued transformation of our community through the remaining bond funds and future projects. And finally, I'd like to say that this will be my last presentation to the Board, as I also will be terming out later this month, and I want to say it's been a privilege serving on the ICOC and especially with the dedicated and excellent staff that I've worked with over the years here. Thank you very much.
And Ms. Masterson, thank you very much for the work that you and all of the members of the committee have done. Very, very appreciated. All right. Next up, I believe we have a report from Business and Ed Services on Summer School, ELOP, and the 45-Day Revision.
Good evening, President Paulson, board members, Cabinet, Superintendent Barr and Cabinet. This is actually a joint presentation with my colleague, Michelle Kegel, as we talk about an overview of summer school, which just ended a few weeks ago, last year's expanded learning program, as well as the 45-day revision. This is one of those amazing topics, fun topics that we get to talk about, so really excited about this. Before I jump into the presentation, I'd like to actually recognize some of our team members. The newest member of the team, which is Director Moore, 12 minutes on the job. No, just kidding. She will be joining the team and we're very excited about that, as well as Joanne Fox, our Coordinator of Expanded Learning, and two new members, Morsy Kurwoski and Cesar Kadasko, who are Project Specialist Three, as well as Shannon Freilish, who is, even though she has retired, she is still here with us cheering us on. So, we're very excited about her retirement and the impact that she's had. So, she's not here, present. She's, very, very appropriately somewhere retired and enjoying the evening.
Can't do that here, is what you're saying?
And we are too. We're very much enjoying the evening as well. So, as you know, Expanded Learning Opportunities Program continues to grow and we continue to enhance our, what's called our Single Comprehensive Program. So, ACES, which you're aware of, which is the typical before and after-school programming, as well as Expanded Learning, combined so that we can maximize the potential of these experiences. There's three components to Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. The before and after-school programs, what we are now calling Explore. We're moving away from ELOP. It just, I know, I know. It just doesn't ring. It doesn't ring with our students and families. But we're looking at Explore, which actually stands for Expanded, EXP, Expanded Learning Opportunities, Reaching Everyone. And when we say everyone, we're talking about our students, our families, our staff, our schools, our community, our culture. And then, of course, we know, due to the conditions of this program, we must also include 30 days of intercession or summer programming beyond 180-day student calendar. And those all are around a nine-hour day. So, beginning with our before and after-school programs, we're proud to share that we served 4,196 students in our before and after-school programs. Last year, we had Boys and Girls Club, City of Escondido, and YMCA. This year, we're transitioning and will have Boys and Girls Club at all of our middle schools, YMCA serving our elementary schools, as well as Quantum. Jumping into our spring program, we had 940 students participate in these really exciting programs. We made them very theme-focused with the YMCA Day Camp focusing on Carnival Fun, Boys and Girls Club, Day Camp was Aloha Week. Everything was connected to Hawaii, starting with the luau, lots of great experiences. We continue with our partnership with CCAE Theatricals, including a nine-hour Day Camp with them. And then we had students participate in the Overnight C Camp, as well as the Overnight Sixth Grade Camp. Both of those were the full week as well. We're constantly looking for feedback from our students and our families, what's resonating with them, what they're enjoying about the programs, what they'd like to see more of. And we're proud to share that after spring break, the student and family feedback was overwhelmingly positive. And that's been very consistent over the past several years. And then on to probably the program that gets the, or the component that gets the most attention is our after-school enrichment and intervention classes. So, we were able to serve in the two, 10-week sessions, 9,336 students. And so that's, some of those students actually participated in both the fall session as well as the spring, but just including them together, it was over 9,000 students. And we've really targeted our programs to be very intentional around enrichment intervention, and we had a combination of teacher-led classes as well as vendor-led classes. And this is the breakdown for our Explore classes. So, you can see that nice breakdown between vendors, which I'll highlight in just a moment, as well as the teacher-led enrichment and the teacher-led intervention. It's important to note that the intervention classes, it's, all of the classes are hour-long. The intervention incorporates 30 minutes of enrichment as well as intervention because we know that including that enrichment keeps our students engaged and wanting to participate in the program. And then that 30 minutes of really targeted intervention is very powerful. Intervention classes range between six to eight students, whereas the enrichment can go up to 20 students. And here's a list of the vendors that we contracted with last year, and you can see the wide range of different programs and folk I that the vendor classes had. This year, we have a few more that we brought in just to meet that need that our families are, and students are requesting. You'll also notice that many of these are local partnerships, so small companies or organizations that are right here in Escondido as well. And then our teacher-led classes, really excited about the teacher-led classes because our teachers know our students the best, they know their needs, their interests, and are really able to utilize that knowledge to support the students in their growth. What we're finding is that kids who participate in before and after-school programs, and specifically kids who participate in the after-school enrichment and intervention classes, have better attendance. So, the data shows that students in these programs, on average, have an average daily attendance rate that is 2.5% higher than their peers. And we also see that for our underserved students, so UPP, our Unduplicated Pupil Percentage Students, where that attendance rate is even more significant. So, we're continuing to dive into this data point and really understand it and maximize it. So, one of the things that we've found is when we look at our esports program, which is really popular at our schools, we see that students, we've actually got all the way down to the point of comparing these students who participate on days that they have their esports class versus their non-esports class is an attendance rate of 2.61% higher. So, if they know that Tuesday and Friday are their esports class, their attendance is 2.61% higher than the other days of the week. So, we're really fine-tuning our, our research around this to see what works and how we could get students to school. So, if they're at school more because of the after-school program, then they're in their seats during the school day benefiting from the high-quality instruction that our teachers are delivering.
Okay, I don't want to interrupt your first presentation, but I just wanted to say thank you because this is, this information is very clear and I appreciate it. It's very well-laid out and it's, it shows us a great metric in comparison to see the effect this program is having on whatever our goals are. So, keep going, but I just wanted to interject that because these, these slides have been great.
Well, interject any positive comments that you'd like. Or not so positive. We're always growing. That's the thing. We're always constantly growing. And, and so we've actually have presented the same information at several other meetings and committees across the county, and the response is the same way. We need to continue to see the impact. And the more focused we get on the impact, then the more we can target our programs to, to meet that need. And as we know, student engagement is one of our pillars, and we're really identifying strategies across the district to increase student engagement. And we definitely know that Expanded Learning Opportunities Program is one of those ways. We're also looking at intervention data. So, our after-school, actually, I think it was a year ago, I was up here and the charge from the Board was, we wanted to see more intervention classes in our after-school settings. And so, we really encouraged that. Smaller group size with our students, teachers who participate, in addition to receiving their hourly compensation, as well as the prep time, they also receive compensation for progress monitoring, data entry, analyzing that data. And so, because what we know is that the key principles of high-quality Tier Three and Tier Two intervention is, are these components. And so, our after-school intervention classes are targeted right around the best practices. Teachers not only identify groups of students who need this targeted intervention, they identify their current levels, they do a pre-assessment, they identify a SMART goal, they progress monitor throughout, and then they analyze that data to, to see the impact as well as the next steps. So, what we identified, because all of these groups are specific to their needs, so each of these teachers will have a SMART goal targeting the 10-week intervention. And so, 72% of the students met that SMART goal. And we're going to continue to look at that data and identify what's working, how can we maximize that, increase the amount. We also survey our families on the impact, and once again, you could see, and these are students who are struggling in specific areas and staying after-school to get additional support in those areas. And you can see the impact that our students and families are also seeing. And that last one, the families and students reporting that the impact of these programs on academic achievement, 90% of the families reported that that was significant. And once again, constantly asking our families, give us your feedback, tell us what you're interested in, so that we can tailor our program to meet your interest and needs. And the, the feedback through the satisfaction surveys, once again, are significantly high. 90, 99% said that they would enroll their child again in, in these programs. Onto the summer program, which seems like an eternity ago, but it was actually three weeks, two and a half weeks, or something like that. So, it just ended, and, and it was an amazing experience. So, once again, really significant impact on students. So, we had the four-week traditional program, which is a partnership between EUSD's teachers and classified staff, and our partners YMCA and Boys and Girls Club to make that nine-hour day because that's a criteria. Something that we've done differently over the past two years is, we've actually said, it's a nine-hour day, and if you want to leave early, then you need to do an early release. In the past, we used to say it was a three-and-a-half-hour day, and you could stay later. So, most families left at three, at 11:30 because they didn't realize that it was the full day. So, twisting it around, the kids, not only did they stay, but they loved the afternoon program. And we've really leveraged our partnership to get some, some very powerful enriching experiences for our students. Most of them, after the nine-hour day, didn't want to go home because they're having so much fun. So, and that's, you'll see that in the survey data, and the comments in the, in the survey data is where it really stands out, where families are just, you know, really expressing their satisfaction and joy and gratitude for the programs. So, but we'll highlight that in a moment. So, we had 2,274 students participate. That was the four-week program. And then we had two summer bridge week programs. The first one was where- The first one was with YMCA, CCAE Theatricals, and Boys and Girls Club. And then we had one final week where it was at the YMCA Camp Surf down in Imperial Beach, and that was a, a six-night program. So they left on Sunday and came back on, on Friday. So, great experience there as well. And it's all about the kids. So we just needed still more photos of, of the students up there, and you could just see the highlights. That photo with the, with the Home Depot pails, that was actually part of the final performance for our new Summer of Rock, which was a five-day, nine-hour program partnership with our EUSD teachers, as well as CCAE Theatricals. I'm sorry, that wasn't a, did I say, that was a four-week program. That was a four-week program. So, really powerful experiences, and you could just see from the students and the teachers, their, the joy in their faces. So, our summer program had academics, enrichment, intervention, choice-based explore classes at the elementary and middle school level. That was new this year. In the previous years, we just had at the elementary level, so this year, we incorporated that at the middle school level, and then the specialty camps. And once again, we want to see the impact of our, our program on not only students' social-emotional learning, but also their academics. And in the 19-day summer academic intervention program, which students received one hour of math or reading intervention, if they needed that Tier III, that really intensive Tier III intervention, we had 123 students receive math intervention at the four campuses. And during that time period, there was 12 points average growth in numbers and operations. So we used the Bridges Math Intervention Curriculum, which targets numbers and operations. And we compared their spring assessment results, which they took in May of, of last school year, to the, their I-Ready performance at the end of summer intervention. And so really, this is probably about 17 days, because we didn't wait till the last day to administer this, because kids don't come to school, or, and then we don't get that data. So we typically do it like Wednesday of the last week. So you see that 12 points, and, and then for reading intervention, we had 140 students who received high-quality reading intervention, and these were, once again, hand-picked teachers who are experts in literacy development, many who were former intervention teachers or coaches. And you can see, they had, on average, 23 points in phonics. And so what we did was, we kind of tried to qualify that a little bit more, and so we, we dove deep. And so to put this in perspective, our students who received math intervention went from the 21st percentile, so if it was 100 students, they would have been number 21, ranked number 21, to the 26th. So in that 17 days, they jumped five percentile points, which is really significant. And then, if we looked at, this is a, I-Ready is a nationally-normed assessment, if we looked at a, a million students, that means they would have jumped over 50,000 students. So, it's kind of like being at line in Disneyland, and you get, get to jump a whole bunch of people to, to get to the ride. So, so really significant impact in just a short amount of time. And once again, we're utilizing those best practices for Tier III intervention, identifying SMART goals, progress monitoring, using a very targeted intervention that's research-based, and then monitoring progress throughout. So, really pleased to see that impact, and we'll continue to, to enhance the experience. And then, once again, we, after, our families are really good at receiving these surveys at the end of the, the program and providing us with feedback. And that last one, we have not hit 100% before, this is the first time that we actually had 100%. So 100% of the families said that they would enroll their child again. And that's on a five-point scale, and so these are families that were four or five, so not even a one-three in that, on that question. And so, we're very grateful that we receive a significant amount of funding for our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, as well as our ACEs program. And so this is a breakdown of our, of our budget for the upcoming year. We do have carryover that we're utilizing to continue to strengthen our program, and at a certain point, when that carryover runs out, then we will, we will scale back on some of the expenditures. But that's the, the breakdown right there. And with that said, we're gonna, since we're talking money, we're gonna have the money experts come up, and that's Michelle Kegel.
All right, well, thank you for that. And Michelle, please remember, he has been talking about joy on their faces.
I think I'm gonna be able to add to that.
All right.
For the first time, temporarily. Good evening. Now we get to talk about my favorite thing, budget. The 45-day revision isn't necessarily required, however, we're presenting it tonight to be able to provide you with the most up-to-date information on our financials. The state adopted their budget on June 27th, after we adopted ours. If you're, if you recall, there was a lot of uncertainty as to the revenue we would be receiving. There was a tug-of-war between the legislative office and the governor. It appears that the governor had a little bit stronger of a tug, and we will be receiving To start with, there's an additional TK add-on of $2,397 per ADA. Based on our current enrollment projections and ADA, that will increase our budget by an additional $1.8 million. This funding source is ongoing, however, it will fluctuate depending on the enrollment in ADA at any given year. The Student Support Professional Development Grant, that's a new one-time revenue for this year. This grant is discretionary, and it just must be spent by June 29th, June 2029. $1.1 million of Learning Emergency Recovery Grant was restored. The, in '23-'24, we had a reduction, they're restoring it. This is more restrictive, and it must be included in our LCAP. Since we didn't know we would be receiving this money in '25-'26, it's not included in this year's LCAP, we'll include it in '26-'27, and we must fully expend that by June of, June 2028. Overall, this additional 6.9 million dollars will help offset our deficits. Federal funds, that's been a hot topic over the last couple months. Early in July, the Department of Education released they would be withholding our Title II and Title IV funds. When we heard about this, we quickly found an alternative funding to be able to continue operating that program. Then shortly, a couple weeks later, they said, never mind, we're gonna give you that money back. What's clear is that the federal government's looking to find ways to consolidate, restructure the Title II, Title III, Title IV funding. You can see this in the proposal, the 2026 proposal.
Michelle, could you please, Title II, Title III, and Title IV?
Yes.
What exactly are those?
Oh geez. Kathleen?
I know the resource number.
Yeah.
One is teacher.
Teacher effectiveness.
Well, my, Title II, III.
Title II, III.
Title II, III.
We know one, and we know nine.
Title II is, Title II is teacher professional development. Title III is support for English learners.
Okay, so Title II is teacher.
Professional development.
Professional development. Title IV is English learners.
Sorry, Title III is English learners. Title IV is all about a well-rounded education, so it covers things like technology, social-emotional supports, and STEM and community involvement, those types of things.
All right, so Title II is professional development, Title III is surrounding English learners, Title IV is well-rounded education, including such things as social-emotional learning, STEM, and I believe arts and music, yes?
I said that, so I'm technology, not a guarantee.
I think it is. Okay, thank you.
With all of the uncertainty, we're gonna continue moving forward with our EUSD plan of using the most restrictive funding sources first. Even though we're gonna be receiving our '25-'26 allocation, we're gonna keep those expenditures in our educator effectiveness resource. That was the move we initiated when we thought we weren't going to be receiving the funds. The reason for this is educator effectiveness expires June 2026, and it's a very restricted funding source. The salaries that were in Title II for the nets and the software, the English learner software, right Kathleen? So, we had software, we're able to, educator effectiveness is able to fund those, so we're gonna keep on that trajectory. By continuing with this plan, in the event that we do not receive our title funding in '26-'27, we get to hold on to our '25-'26 funding and use it in that year. So we're buying ourselves another year of being able to operate these programs without having to dip into any other funding source. And then, it's important to note that there hasn't been a lot of talk in regards to changing how we're funded for Title I and IDA. And then, we'll continue to keep you up-to-date on the ever-going changes on the federal side.
No, that was, exactly, I am, between both of you, I am so encouraged with our outlook, especially with the explore, I thought it was, I've empowered my mind for some reason, but explore. But, our goal is student achievement and producing well-rounded students. And explore, while it has all these fun enrichment components, I am so encouraged to see that we've, you know, tied back in the, the academic aspect, and we've made such gains with those students in our first round. That is fantastic. I, I can't say enough, I'm very excited about it, because we are, by doing these things, we not only are having the engagement with our students, which makes them come to school, which all ties together, but we are seeing the increased achievement with that. And so, I, I'm just very encouraged. And very encouraged, we are knocking down our deficit a little bit. So, this has been a fantastic presentation, so thank you.
Ed services and business services, just bringing smiles.
Ooh. HR? No, thank you guys, it was excellent.
And just to shout out, this is our Girls on the Run program, and there's so many Girls on the Run coaches that are EUSD-certificated and classified staff members. As you know, we're one-third of the county's Girls on the Run program. So, that's a, a final smile.
Lots of joy on their faces. Okay, we are moving on, I believe, to item M1, which is gonna be our Proposition 28 Annual Report, along with approval.
I need someone to speak to this.
So we have to have our annual report about Proposition 28. That one actually is arts-music grant, and so, as we provided that to the board and attached here for your review, just to adopt the annual report.
Yeah, every year, we have to, per the Prop 28 rules and regulations, we have to submit the plan of how we used it, and how we intend to use it. There's a restriction, we cannot use it for administrator salaries.
Perfect. All right, looking for a motion to approve.
Just a point of clarification, this is for, this is for year '23-'24 closeout, or is this '24-'25?
No, it's, it's for the '24-'25 school year.
Because it's, it says fiscal year '23-'24 on the report, just a point of clarification.
Okay, because we've had to do this multiple times, you might have not changed the year on that.
So, just with that adjustment, I'll move approval.
Second.
I think we need to make sure this is the correct report.
Kathleen, could you come up here real quick? Thank you. So our item before us now for the annual report, in the report itself, it's calling out the '23-'24 year, is it for that year, or is it for the '24-'25 year?
It's the '24-'25 year. I apologize, that's my mistake, I believe.
Okay, we will.
Well, I've opened it, it says '23-'24, I just don't know. Right. We just need to know that the data inside this report is accurate versus the year.
Correct, the data is reflecting the last school year, which was '24-'25.
We focus more on the data than on changing the year at the top of the report.
So that the fact that we had 17 full-time equivalent teachers, that's the right data. There were 17.
But the, it's the same, the, the number of teachers were the same both years, but it, it, the data does reflect.
So 9,689 students were served in '24-'25.
Okay. And the 19 school sizes, okay.
Okay, so just to clarify, we are approving the '24-'25 Proposition 28 Annual Report. Any corrections to that report will be made, and please vote.
Hit show voting, did I see it?
Yeah, no, I did.
All right, motion carries 5-0. Moving on to item M2, this is for our '25-'26 Expanded Learning Opportunities Plan, which is now our explore plan, but we're still approving the ELOP plan. So looking for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Ms. Gardner moves, Mr. Olson seconds, please vote. I'm sorry, that was Mr. Houston seconding. No, I said it wrong, because I was listening.
So Doug was wrong, Michelle was right.
I'm wrong.
Yeah, that's okay.
I'm wrong.
I'm in his head. I'm in his head.
All right. Still early people, let's not get, uh... All right, Human Resources, this is a revision of the job description for Director of Teaching and Learning.
Yes, I'm seeking approval for the updated job description for Director of Teaching and Learning.
I move approval.
Ms. Harper moves, Mr. Houston seconds, please vote.
Vote difference signs every time.
Oh, is this a game now?
Motion carries 5 to 0. All right. So our next item is item M4, this is the Employment Contract Agreement for Assistant Superintendent Rick Osir, who apparently is also our music RDJ tonight.
I don't think so. I don't know, he's not.
Oh, oh, never mind. I'm just making all sorts of mistakes tonight, I apologize.
I've heard Rick's music, and it's not that, yeah, no.
Okay, don't want that. Mark, you're doing a great job over there, buddy. All right, looking for a motion to approve.
Well, I have to, I have to read a little bit of a thing here. And so at the last meeting, the, the board took action to appoint Mr. Osir to this role of Assistant Superintendent. Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. This is the contract brought forward for ratification, as it's been starting on July 1st of this current year. As is required by law, I have to read aloud some of these details. And so Mr. Osir's, this contract is for a period of two years, from July 1st of this year through June, July 30th, or June 30th of 2027. It is for a starting salary of two thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars, also because of his master's degree, a fifteen hundred dollar a year stipend for his master's degree. Satisfied what we need to do, so now you can take action.
All right, now I'm looking for a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, please vote.
Doug's waiting to vote till the song plays.
We did it.
Motion passes five to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Osir. We are moving on to Board and Staff Reports. Ms. Gardner.
Okay, welcome back to the, to the new school year, everyone. I hope everyone had a pleasant summer and did some fun things. I actually was happy to attend the, I guess it was the district office, welcome back, or what, oh, it was farewell, wait, it was so close, but, it was a barbecue. Well-attended and, and thank you, Andy, for doing all the cooking, slaving over the hot stove, and to Audrey for arranging everything and deciding where everything went. It was a lovely potluck, and everybody made wonderful dishes. And then I'm looking forward to the barbecue tomorrow. I hope everyone will come and meet everyone, wish everyone luck for the new school year. And I'd like to give a shout out to the Patio Playhouse for being a lovely, a wonderful asset in our community. I was happy to attend a performance of Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory because a dear little girl that I know was performing in it at the, at the amphitheater at Kid Carson Park. It was so well-done that I would go again. Anyhow, we should be supportive, and it's what makes Escondido such a welcoming community events like that and, and opportunities like that. They don't charge the children to participate. That was a really nice thing to hear, so it helps kids find their creativity and get some fun as well. And that's my report.
Okay, I really don't, I don't, I have no report other than just welcome back, looking for a great year, think we're going to have a really good time, and excited to see how everything progresses for the following year. Thank you.
Yeah, just echo what Frank said, welcome back. I had the chance to go, as many of my colleagues did, to go to the luncheon that we put on for the custodial staff a few weeks ago. It was a well-attended event for very, very deserving individuals who worked very, very hard over the summer to make sure the classrooms and the schools and the facilities are ready to go for next week. So again, had a chance to sit and eat lunch with quite a few of them, but not all of them, so I want to thank them as well as everybody as we prepare for another wonderful school year. But it was great to see and reward some very hard workers who worked over the summer to, to make the, our district facilities and schools ready to go. So looking forward to have everybody back, and I hope everyone has a wonderful beginning of school next week, and that's the end of my report.
Excuse me, could I add to that too? I forgot, I forgot to mention that I was also at that, and I, and I'm sorry because Maintenance and Operations put that on, yes? And they did all the, the work, and it was wonderful to, to meet some of the people who work so hard behind the scenes that we don't, don't always see every day, and to sit and talk to some of them. Thank you again for that opportunity, and thanks for inviting us. Okay, sorry about that.
It's okay. Thank you, both of you were, I forgot I'd gone to both of those.
I know, that's what happens when you're first, and then you hear everybody else, you go, oh wait, I was there too.
I was there too, exactly. No, the D O barbecue was great, I think that's a great tradition to start in getting everyone involved, and thank you for inviting us to, First Annual was excellent, yes, and everyone's potluck, and I got Joan's broccoli salad, which I think you should make more often, it was really good.
Oh, thank you.
Yes. With, well, don't forget the cheesecake. And then also the M&amp;O barbecue, which by far is always the best food of any barbecue, it's so delicious.
Yeah, the carne asada was fantastic.
It was very good. And they, it's, it's just so great to see their care for each other, and how much they care for our students, and how much effort they put forward in everything they do. I mean, they had to work so hard to get the schools ready, and get everything buttoned up and clean, and especially, you know, working around the schools that had the Explore programs and summer school, you know, getting, working around those obstacles and, you know, kids actually being on campus. So I really appreciate it, and I also wanted to thank the teachers this year because last year we got the feedback from a lot of the, the day crew that it was hard to, you know, get their classrooms with all their furniture properly moved so they could clean it properly, and it seemed like there was a tremendous effort on the teachers' part this year to really set their classrooms up so M&amp;O can come in there, and the custodian staff could come in there and clean properly, and not throw out their backs by moving, you know, huge things that were in there. So thank you to the teachers for making that happen, but definitely thank you to the custodian staff and M&amp;O for getting so much work done this summer. And on that note, I went to Mission, I saw the completed buildings.
Oh, good.
At Mission, which, beautiful, that campus is just gorgeous. I love the, the painting, the painting of the old new building to match the new building, and how we're also going to be able to let the community use the field as well with the restroom, which I think is fantastic, so thank you. I do wanted, I, I wanted to thank you, Roy, and your staff, because when we think of a hundred and eighty-two million dollar bond projects, I think the, the public really thinks, you know, it, a lot of waste is happening. I, I think that's kind of the impression with anything government spending, that type of thing, that there's just constant waste and no one's looking after it, and we know that's not true here at EUSD. It was really the care you and your team take to make sure every penny is spent in the right spot, and that we can get the most out of our tax dollars, I wanted to thank you, thank the IOC as well, but definitely your crew. He gave a great example, I don't know if you guys have seen it yet, but there was cabinets, there's three cabinets, big, you know, supply cabinets in each classroom, and those were, the cost of those were twenty-five hundred dollars apiece. And they were able to take them out, instead of spending twenty-five hundred dollars apiece, they were able to take them out of our relos that got moved. And so seventy-five hundred dollars times twenty-five classrooms, I mean, that's just one great example of how well you thought through our issues, what we need, but still providing a beautiful product for our students and our staff to really learn and really enhance their environment. So again, thank you to you and your department, because it is a testament to what honesty can do and attention to detail to be great, take great care of our tax dollars at work, because, you know, that, they always want more money, and we, and we want to do the best with what we have to provide the best education possible, so thank you. And I think, oh, no, that's not my report, I'm sorry. One more thing, I also went to the Empowered PD Day yesterday at Del Dios, which was EUSD-led by our fabulous teachers and TOSAs. It was classroom after classroom after classroom of our teachers leading a PD, and the teachers in there who volunteered to come engaged in best practices and how we can affect our Tier One instruction for our students.
Was it well-attended?
Yes, they had, I think they had over two hundred and thirty teachers. They had a few not show up, and then they had thirty extra show up on the day of. So, right, Rick?
So the final count was two hundred and ninety-two teachers and administrators who were present.
That's fabulous. And they were very exciting topics. I learned, I learned a lot just walking between classrooms, but I just wanted to thank those teachers who attended, but also the ones who took the initiative to lead the sessions, and really share what they've found in their classrooms that's working for them and they're seeing results with. So I, I, that was really great, and great to see our EUSD staff on display of how much talent we have in this district. So thank you for all those who put it together, and everyone who attended. Now I'm done, thank you.
All right, I would just like to say one final thank you to everybody, everybody, teachers, staff, administrators, who oversaw our summer program in all aspects of it. I was able to attend a short day at Orange Glen Elementary School and saw a taste of the great things that our kids are doing. I personally am saying that every new and different experience our kids get, whether there is specific academics attached or not, is extremely valuable and is going to really lead them to more, and I am so proud that this district has taken the lead in the county and in the state of implementation of our ELOP now Explore programs. Anywhere you go, it is obvious we have either the best or one of the top, top two or three programs in the state of California, and our kids are benefiting every day, so thank you. Also, thank you to all of our M&amp;O people, all of our classified staff that have worked all summer to get classrooms ready, that's been mentioned several times, that level of work just can't be underestimated. Teachers are going back into their classrooms today, and things are almost ready to go. You know, they've got, they've got to do their thing, and so, but the fact that the classrooms are clean and ready is, is so valuable. Thank you to all of our teachers who are working a lot of hours to get their classrooms ready to go, so they will be really ready to go on Monday, and, I'm sorry, Tuesday, Tuesday.
Heart attack.
Yeah, Tuesday, I'm not setting new, we're not changing the calendar. And, and thank you to everybody, administrators for setting a positive tone. Thank you to our classified staff that is going to help make every day run, run smoothly for our students. So thank, thank you to everybody involved. Dr. Ibarra.
Okay, I'm sure we're all wondering, where did the summer go? No matter how long it is, it always is, it just goes by with the blink of an eye, so welcome back, everyone. Just wanted to remind everyone, we have our all-district, all-employees are welcome to attend the back-to-school, welcome-back barbecue, which is from eleven-thirty to one o'clock. Definitely, we need some help, so if board members can be there to help us feed, two o'clock would be, you'll be right there.
Two o'clock for cleanup, yeah, show up then, Zesty.
And it's also our wellness fair as well during that time, so, and again, welcome back, everyone, and remember, school begins on Tuesday, the nineteenth. Looking forward to seeing everyone, thank you.
The phone call went out tonight.
Yes, it did.
Are you going to put it out again on Monday night?
We're going to do a short reminder for everybody about, yeah. So just giving parents, just those last minute, you know, where to find bell schedules and all of that, so.
So first, after coming out of the summer, where did it go? And of course, those of us in business services, and I just want to thank every one of you in all the different departments and all the work that we've done, from building schools to supplying all those schools and everything, cleaning them, and, and all the projects we did in maintenance, and I want to also appreciate your appreciation towards school board for, for recognizing all of those that are working throughout the summer, and then of course, those that worked in our summer school programs as well, our teachers and the partners we have in, on all of the great things that happened there. Just a, as a quick story, but at one of the events, the end of the Summer of Rock, where the kids were banging on the, the bucket drums, a few parents came up and talked to me about the importance of it and the value that they found, but one in particular, who's, her son hasn't been really engaged in school, hasn't really wanted to go to school, definitely didn't want to go to summer school, but once there, realized something came alive in him, as, in her words, into where she couldn't stop him from coming. In fact, there was another camp he usually goes to, and he didn't want to go to that, he wanted to stay at our camp and continue in that, and now he's excited to go actually to start the school year in a way he's never been before. And so just, from a parent to a parent, myself being one as well, just hearing that story and understanding the impact that the programs that we have have on the children of our community is, just, it touches the heart, and I know that those are going to continue to grow, and those experiences will keep happening throughout the school year. And so now I'm excited to get out there and, and see what goes on in our schools and our classrooms with a new focus for myself, and, and just see that work continuing, and the magic that we keep making here in EUSD just continue to happen. Of course, we saw that starting off yesterday, thanking all of our teacher leaders that put that together, as well as our educational services staff to organize it, but really thank you a lot to all of the teachers and certificated staff that came a, a day early and cut their summer short by a day to be there, and just showing the commitment that our staff has for the work that we do, and, and it was, it was a great experience. And so we'll see you guys all out there, and Happy New Year.
Happy.
I wanted to also thank the Nets Department. Yesterday, we had forty-six brand-new EUSD employees. The, the feeling and the energy in that room for those new teachers hearing what we offer, they were so excited, and we were also joined by the six new residents who are going to be starting that resident journey this year. They were excited, so it's neat to see all the work that we've done, and people really excited about coming to EUSD, so thank you, and welcome to all of them.
First time that I get to say something at the end of the board meeting. I'm just full of gratitude. I'm full of gratitude towards the board for the confidence in this position, thank you very much, and then just full of gratitude for all of the teachers and staff, certificated and classified, who not only helped the summer program be such a success, but also all of the professional development that has happened over the past couple of weeks. Just amazing team effort, and just wonderful to see teachers, staff providing it, as well as all the participants, EUSD staff who participated in it, so just very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next regularly scheduled board meeting will be held on Thursday, September 4th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the Escondido Union School District, Carolyn Gilbert Education Center, 2310 Alder Grove Avenue, Escondido, California, 92029. We will not be returning to closed session, and we are adjourned.